Hi, Mick.
How are you, ma'am? Rita, did you see New York passed legalization of recreational marijuana today?
I didn't hear that. Repeat?
Uh, New York passed legalization of marijuana. Connecticut's getting surrounded.
Yes, it is. Yeah. We have to, I don't know why we're dragging our feet. We need to do it.
No?
I had access, this is two years now, a turn in Mendick to look at it for me. To see what we can do here in Hampden.
Um, we should, we once, you mean like independently?
No, no, I was looking to see if I'm then can plant and set and resale marijuana. That's my.
Yeah. Well, we have Moretti Farm, we have the Powder Farm, we have.
Yeah, that's correct. We have the farm, we can utilize it, we can stabilize it. We can, we can make sure.
Come, I can't hear anybody.
Protect it.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, Kim.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes.
Yeah, I can't hear any, any voices. I don't know what's going on.
Volume turned up?
All right, let me check. I don't, nothing's changed on these settings. I don't understand.
That's why I no longer use my computer. I'm using my separate computer. Because it was the same thing that happened to me one night. I couldn't hear anyone. I'm like. Yeah, so we can, we can do those things and we can get a great income from that in Hampden.
Yeah. It is, that is just out there.
Yes, it is. Hey. Let's try whatever.
That's why we need to send our letter.
Did you send it yet?
I emailed it to the delegation, but the governor and lieutenant governor do not have actual emails, so I need to print it and snail mail it to them.
Do we need to, do we need to hand deliver it?
Okay.
Yeah, maybe I can, yeah, maybe we should.
I will go, gladly go.
Okay, that's a good idea.
I would gladly go.
Yeah, that depends on the timing, but I could, but I could be convinced.
I'm ready. Yeah.
Hey, Brad.
Who are you?
Hello, Brad.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Hi, Adrian.
Hello, the people.
Hello, Adrian. Hello, Athena. Hello, Kath.
Thanks, Mick.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Kath. Hello again.
Yes, hello again. Hi Valerie, hi Brad.
Hello.
Adrian.
Hi, Adrian.
Athena, hello.
Hi, Athena.
Oh, I can't really hear. I'm trying to get my volume right.
Okay.
That's the story of the day around here.
Oh, yeah.
Kim, can you hear us now?
Okay, I can hear now. I forgot I have my earplugs plugged in.
Oh, there we go. Uh, Ms. Renta, can you hear us?
You are muted if you're trying to answer. Hi, Betty. Oh, she's not here yet.
She's coming.
There she is. Hi, Betty.
Nick, I'm gonna go join from my desktop. I'll be right back. I don't know what's going on with my laptop.
Okay, Kim. Hello, Mr. Farmer. Hello, Ms. Bayes.
Okay, I can hear. Can you guys hear me?
Yep. I can hear you, Kim.
Okay.
We'll give it just one more minute or two for people to get logged down. And just a note on process, we first, we have, I believe, four pieces of written public input, Ms. Renta?
Yes.
Uh, so we'll have that first. I'll ask you to share your screen in minutes, and then this has people to their full names for their Zoom ID. Uh, and raise your hand, and we'll bring you into talk. And then every person will have three minutes, and then we'll move on to the next person. Um, and so we'll just give another minute for other folks to get logged in here. We probably have a few on the way still.
Jaron's in the, oh, you got him.
Hello, Jaron.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Jaron.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, why don't we go ahead and get started? I'll open up our public hearings on the Board of Ed side of the budget before the council. At seven oh six, we'll begin with written input. Ms. Renta has emailed around to all council members, the public input that was received the email. It is also available on the town website. Uh, but Ms. Renta, would you be so kind as to share your screen and so we can see it visually? And so why don't we take it, there were four, but not too long, if I recall, Ms. Renta, so say about 10 minutes of, of reading time?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go with that.
All right, we'll take two more minutes of reading time.
I would ask folks, if at all possible, please identify yourself by your full name in the attendees. If you hover over your name, two boxes should appear. One says more, or maybe just one box appears that says more. If you hover that, uh, you should be able to rename yourself. So if you can, please put your full name in. And our first public speaker this evening will be Mr. George Levinson. Mr. Levinson? Just a moment, please. Uh, Mr. Levinson, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mick. Uh, I, I have spent some time just today, actually, with Superintendent Goller and his financial director, Tom Areola, trying to understand this budget. And it is quite a dilemma, I must say. They're saying they need 3.4% or 3.4 million increase. And as nearly as I can tell, the, the Board of Education is insatiable. There is no amount of dollars that they will not consume. Just to give you an idea what's going on in this budget. Uh, the teachers are all getting a 2% raise. That's $77,000 average pay for teachers. That's well above the state average. The directors and the, and the principals get over 3%, both of them, and they're averaging over $140,000 in regular pay. The cost of student aides has gone up 3.73%. In fact, the total salary budget is up to over 2.5%. Nearly $64 million for salaries alone. The other huge increases are in professional services, the plus the buses, et cetera, et cetera. The biggest increase of all is in special education. 928 students requiring special education, and 100 of them, 100 of them have to go to actually special non-public schools, averaging over 100,000 apiece. And another 100 go to special ed facilities like Wintergreen and other, and others' schools in here in Hampden. Uh, the special education budget is up 28%. I don't know where the end is. I really don't. You've got hundreds of people that'll come forward and give the Board of Education anything you want, they want. It's for the kids. I want the kids to get a good education too, but I don't think you solve that with money. Uh, the mayor has, has only given a $1.5 million increase versus the 3.4 requested. And for once, I actually agree with the mayor. I think, uh, I think it's, uh, it's time to say enough is enough with schools and the spending. And to force them, to force them to stop bleeding, cut some of the raises. And if they, if they can't cut the raises, cut some staff. We've got a huge staff. Over 1,000 people work for the Board of Education, including part timers, 860 some odd, full time.
Mr. Levinson, that's three minutes. Could you wrap up your thoughts, please, sir?
I sure can. So, uh, I, I am hoping to see the schools succeed. But I was, I'm hoping for them to succeed without having unlimited money. And this year is gonna be a hard one. And it's time for, uh, it's time to draw some lines in the sand, I'm afraid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levinson. Um, the person identified as Vera, uh, gonna, are you in for the speaking? Please identify yourself with your full name. And you have three minutes, and the floor is yours. Uh, Vera, you are muted at this time, if you're trying to communicate with us. So maybe if you can take the mute off for her.
Uh, I can only ask to unmute, which I'm doing. Just to remind your council president, um, the mute for people is gonna be on your left-hand side. There's gonna be a cross, a red cross over a microphone icon. So if you click on that, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Uh, Vera, I think we'll, we'll move on, uh, if you can, uh, uh, as Mr. Farmer said, if you hover your mouse towards the bottom, and if you go left, there should be a microphone.
I think the spacebar might mute and unmute as well. I'm not positive.
Correct.
Ms. Renta, are you able to unmute, Vera?
No, I get what you get, Nick. Ask to unmute. I can only ask her. Uh, but you can try, try the spacebar.
I have a, a thought. I go, what I'm gonna try to do here is promote her onto the panel, and then perhaps we can uh, mute or unmute.
Oh, it went out. It went back on. We had it for a minute.
If you hold down the spacebar as well, as long as you're holding down the spacebar, you'll be unmuted.
It can't seem to, uh, yeah, I can't, even with her in the panel, I can't mute her.
She, she might be on a phone too. I might not have a spacebar.
So ma'am, we're gonna move on. I'll ask Ms. Garrett next, and if you can discover that, or if you can text one of us or email Ms. Renta, uh, we could, we could read, uh, your, uh, your thoughts out as well. Or myself, it was krenta@hampden.com or mgary@hampden.com. And Mr. Farmer, again, very generous, generously offering up his number. And, uh, Mr. Farmer, again, very generous, generously offering up his, uh, number. Uh, so Ms. Vera, we'll come back to you, but, uh, we'll move on to, uh, Lauren Garrett. Ms. Garrett, uh, the floor is yours. Please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Good evening. I wanted to take a minute to thank the educators who have gone into classrooms with the fear of bringing home a deadly virus to their family or having a transmission in their classroom that got a student's family sick. I've seen you teach on Zoom to blocks of names on the screen and still found ways to engage students. I want to thank the district for mobilizing for food and technology distribution and adapting quickly to care for our families. As we get back to a more normal life next year, please ensure that the Board of Education is prepared to deal with learning loss and the social emotional scars of this pandemic that could last longer than the term of the American Recovery Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. And Vera, we're still hoping you'll be able to unmute yourself. Or if you can contact Mr. Farmer or, uh, or Ms. Renta or myself. Uh, pending that, we'll ask if there's anyone else, uh, in the audience who would like to address the council on the Board of Ed side of the budget this evening. Um, or if there is a budget question or a budget, uh, comment in general you'd like to make, seeing as, um, we do have some time available to us.
I'm only here to listen. Oh.
Oh, oh, certainly. Oh, I'm so sorry, ma'am. You had your, uh, hand up though. I, I thought you were looking for, uh,
Oh, no.
Okay, well, I will, uh, change that. Sorry about that. Is there any other member from the public who'd like to speak to the council about the Board of Ed budget? Is there any other member of the public would like to speak to the council on the Board of Education budget? Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak to the council about the Board of Education budget?
Council president, just a reminder, um, if someone is interested, uh, we're encouraging them to raise their hand. It's the feature at the bottom. It says raise hand if you're on your computer.
Yeah, if anyone's, uh, would like to, please, uh, if you go down to your bottom screen, if you hover there, click on more and, uh, raise hand option should come up. We'll give it another moment or two. Uh, when we have been in person, there have been several times when, uh, it's just taken a moment or two for people to, uh, prepare their thoughts and, uh, come before the council so we can take a moment or two. Is there any moment, a member of the public would like to speak to the council on the Board of Education budget? Uh, if so, please just raise your. Is there any member of the public who'd like to, uh, speak to the council about the Board of Education budget or, uh, the budget in general? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close our public hearing. Uh, my folks, we'll start our deliberations on Tuesday, the 6th. Uh, also a scheduling note, although I will send out the schedule tomorrow after conferring, uh, with, uh, some of our finance team today about, uh, areas of the budget that perhaps need more time. There are parts of the budget where we rely on information from the state, information from outside vendors to help us, uh, calculate the numbers that go into the budget. At times, these require, uh, well, even when the budget is passed, we're still not entirely sure what the budget, uh, of the state will be. So there is some ambiguity there. Um, but sometimes it is best to let some, uh, departments wait a little bit. Uh, so we'll send out that schedule tomorrow. Uh, in addition, tomorrow, uh, we will receive notice of a special meeting, uh, of the council immediately prior, um, to our committee meetings on Monday. Uh, and that is due, as we mentioned before, we had some technical issues with our last meeting. And, uh, there are some changes that need to occur to the language. I believe, Ms. Renta, it was the dates of the reappointments?
Yes, the dates of the reappointments were down with previous paperwork and not revised paperwork that was sent later.
Uh, so we have some revisions that we'll introduce and make, uh, in also, uh, Ms. Gruwen's, um, advice. We're also just going to reaffirm that evening's, uh, vote. Um, so hopefully we can take care of that in a relatively uh, quick fashion and we'll move on to our, uh, committee meetings and Mr. Jackson and our finance team will be presenting, uh, for the finance committee. And, um, Ms. Dolan, although not here, has, uh, mentioned folks on, um, not on the finance committee, uh, still be open to ask questions, uh, so that we can, um, uh, get those answers that we needed about the, uh, budget and from, um, our finance team in general. Mr. McDowell.
Wh- what time will we be convening the, uh, special meeting? Is that 6:00 or 6:30?
Uh, 6:45.
Oh, okay, cool. Thanks.
And then, uh, we'll move on to our committee meetings. All right, so, uh, then without further ado, we're heading into a holiday weekend. If, for those who celebrate, uh, please enjoy and, um, best wishes. So, good night, everyone.
Safe travels. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.
Good night, all.